I see a commission order with the clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Vanir.
Here.
Commissioner Jelka.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Peck.
Here.
Commissioner Purney.
I would invite everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now it's time for the citizens forum and time for citizens to come before the commission to give us opinions on something that is not on the official agenda. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? If not, we'll go on to awards and proclamations.
Item 4.1, the Day of February 6, 2009, as Alfred Schwan Day in the city of Salina. Harry Smith, Senior Director with Manufacturing Operations with the Schwan Food Company will read the proclamation.
Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for the distinct privilege of allowing me to do the second reading of this proclamation. Whereas Alfred Schwan has been a member of the Salina community for 37 years, and whereas the Schwan Food Company has been a major employer in Salina for 39 years, offering residents a place to work and offering financial support to the community, and whereas Alfred has helped grow a small 12,000 square foot pizza plant into a 500,000 square foot pizza plant with a new distribution center, making Tony's Pizza Plant the largest pizza plant in the world, and whereas Alfred's leadership has led Salina's largest employer through times of uncertainty and times of growth, making the Schwan Food Company a leading producer of fine frozen foods, the top producer of frozen pizza in the country, and the fifth largest frozen food company in the world. Whereas during his career, Alfred Schwan has received numerous accolades, including being named to the National Frozen Food Hall of Fame and the Salina Business Hall of Fame, and whereas he believes, he always believes, the best is yet to come and in the awesome people power of Schwan's. I now ask that the mayor of Salina do hereby proclaim February 6, 2009, as Alfred Schwan Day. Thank you.
Do you have any special events planned on that Friday?
We do have an open house from 1:30 to 4:30 at the Alfred Schwan Resource Center, just south of the plant on Centennial Road. It will be open, we'll have a lot of the employees coming through, there are a lot of past employees, and members from corporate and marshals in Minnesota will come down to honor the day.
Very good. I have a signed copy of the proclamation for you.
Item 4.2, the month of February 2009, as National Ambux Month in the city of Salina. Lori Blake, District 5D Visible Chair of the Salina New Network Ambux will read the proclamation.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, whereas Ambux is dedicated to creating mobility and independence for people with disabilities, and whereas the recognition of Ambux as an organization making an important difference in communities across the United States as noteworthy events, and whereas the city of Salina is proud to boast three chapters of Ambux, the Salina AM Breakfast Bandits, the New Network Ambux, and Red Baron Ambux, and whereas New Network Chapter of Ambux is a chapter now celebrating 17 years of service, Salina AM Chapter is now celebrating 50 years of service, and Red Baron Chapter is now celebrating 28 years of service. Whereas the city of Salina is proud to be the home of Ambux past National President Tom Lautis, District 5D Governor Karen Vidrickson, and past 5D Governor John Reynolds, and whereas each of the chapters have various community projects in which they participate, such as funding and building fully accessible playgrounds and public parks and schools, financial assistance to children and adults with disabilities, building ramps to individuals' homes, providing therapeutic amtrix for children, and funding scholarships for students in physical therapy, occupational therapy, and speech and language pathology degree programs. We request it be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the city of Salina, Kansas, hereby proclaim the month of February as National Ambux Month.
And what activities do you have planned?
February is the National Visibility Month of Ambux, and so that's why we're asking for this particular month here, but we also have, the New Network Ambux has the Bit Appetit fundraiser, which funds around $30,000 for our programs on March 1st. The AM Chapter has the sports show on March 7th and 8th, and we will be participating in some Special Olympics activities in February, including the polar plunge and the Special Olympics basketball tournament that's held at Southeast of Salina.
Very good, thank you. I have a signed copy of the proclamation for you.
Thank you.
Item 4.3, the month of February 2009, as Black History Month in the city of Salina. Bruce Lacy, Second Vice President of the NWA CP will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon, everyone. I want to thank you for this time, allowing us to read the proclamation, February 2009, for Black History Month. Black History Month is an opportunity for all Americans to honor the rich culture, heritage, and legacy of the people of African descent, and pay tribute to them and the community organizations that contribute to the social, cultural, economic, and political life of Salina. And the citizens of Salina have been in the forefront of efforts to establish a caring, compassionate society based on the inherent dignity of all its members by taking a leadership role aimed at eliminating all forms of discrimination and disadvantage, and by recognizing that a fundamental strength of our community is based on the diversity among us. Now therefore, Mr. Mayor, I ask, I, John K. Vanir, Mayor of the city of Salina, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2009, Black History Month, and urge that every citizen of Salina join me in celebrating the diversity and character of our community, and highlight the importance of sharing our culture, customs, and traditions with those around us. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Salina, Kansas, be affixed this day, February 2, 2009.
And what activities do you have planned for the month?
The activities we have for the month of February 2009 are the Black History Month display in the entry level of the Salina City-County Government Building. This display was set up by Earl and Joanne Bess, and is currently on display. It would also be displayed at the Salina Post Office. Also, February 5, at 7:00 PM, there will be a movie and discussion. The movie is entitled San Kofa, S-A-N-K-O-F-A, and the discussion will be led by Reverend Dolores Williamson of the Mentor United Methodist Church. This event will take place at Kansas Wesleyan University at Peters Science Hall, and it is open to the public. Another event, February 21, there will be a Black History Month program at Quail United Methodist. This program begins at 6:00 PM and also is open to the public. Our last event for February 28, the NWA CP Salina Branch will host their annual Freedom Fund banquet. This event will take place at the Holodome. The theme for the celebration is 100 Years Only The Beginning. 2009 is the 100 years anniversary of the oldest civil rights organization in the world. The public is invited. Tickets are $35 and are currently available for any member. Attire for this event is formal and semi-formal. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. I have a signed copy of the proclamation for you.
Thank you.
We have no public hearings or items scheduled for a certain time, so we'll go on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of January 26, 2009. Item 6.2, Resolution Number 096593, approving the Salina-Salina County Solid Waste Management Committee's annual plan review for 2008. Item 6.3, Resolution Number 096594, appointing Andrew Couch to the Heritage Commission. Item 6.4, authorized sole source purchase of the desk officer online reporting system from Cop Logic Incorporated in the amount of $26,950. Item 6.5, award of contract for the 2009 Brick Street Curb Repair Project Number 072650 to Bryant &amp; Bryant Construction.
Are there any items a Commissioner would like pulled from the consent agenda? If not, I'd accept a motion to approve it.
Mayor, I'd move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. There is no development business, we'll move on to administration.
Item 8.1, second reading ordinance Number 0910483, amending Chapter 8 of the Salina Code by amending Chapter 17 of the 2003 International Building Code pertaining to special inspections.
This ordinance was passed on January 26, and since then, no comments have been received. Is there any public comment at this time? If not, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor, I move that we accept ordinance Number 0910483 on second reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 0810483 on second reading. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Jelka.
Aye.
Commissioner Larson.
Aye.
Commissioner Peck.
Aye.
Mayor Vanir.
Aye. Motion passes 4-0.
Item 8.2, report on bids received for the Phase 1 vehicles and equipment purchases for 2009.
Mr. Franz.
Mayor and Commissioners, thank you. Bids were open for these items on January 9. We provided a spreadsheet showing the outcome for each one of the items, as well as a complete summary of the vehicles and equipment plan for 2009. We had only, this year we had only one item that received a single bid, that was a grass springing machine for the Parks and Recreation. We received at least two bids on all other items. There's one item that was materially higher than the estimate contained within the vehicles and equipment replacement program as it was approved, and that was a golf cart replacement, which was estimated at $24,000 for 2009. That estimate was predicated on a three-year lease purchase and was the cost for the first year of that arrangement only. The recommendation is to purchase 22 reconditioned 2006 carts at a net cost of $37,782, or about $1,717 per cart. These reconditioned carts are provided with a full two-year warranty. Cost per cart is about $1,000 less than a new cart. Our practice has been to cycle these carts about every five years. We have deferred replacement recently, and the carts that we are now trading for these date as far back as 1999 to 2000, so they are getting a little long in the tooth, as it were. Reconditioned carts will be good for the routine five-year cycle. This purchase will replace about half of our fleet of 50 carts. Cart rental's an important revenue center for the golf course, generating about $150,000 per year. Each cart's rented about 140 times per year. Our cost per round, including capital, maintenance, and operation, is about $10 a round. Our charge for the use of the carts is $24.50, so the cart rental program provides a significant contribution to Course O'erhead. Staff recommends we proceed with the acquisition using a three-year lease purchase arrangement. Annual costs are anticipated to be on the order of about $13,500 compared to the budget of $24,000. Staff recommending that we reject all the bids for the hatchback or wagon for Development Services Division. While we did receive two qualifying bids, we received no bids for a hybrid vehicle. We'd like to evaluate the possibilities of a hybrid in this particular application, and would recommend that we rebid or negotiate purchase. Phase 1 recommendation includes 16 of the 30 items that are authorized for 2009. Total amount bid for these items was $676,598 compared to the estimate for these same items of $735,500, or about $58,900 less than anticipated. Recommendation is to approve the vehicles and equipment purchase as provided. Be glad to try to answer any questions that you might have. We do have department personnel available also if questions get too technical for me to handle.
Questions of staff.
Rod, regarding the hatchback or wagon, about how long would we expect to hold on to that vehicle?
Five to 10 years would be my guess. It's a little difficult to say because Development Services has, for the last several years, used recycled police cars. This year, there just aren't any that are suitable for that purpose, and so, you know, they've been using vehicles that have been pretty well-used already, so it's a little hard to tell how long a new one might last in that application. I'd say five to 10.
Yeah, I would say probably seven to 10, at least. As long as it's a reliable vehicle that meets a need, we would hold on to it, we wouldn't just rotate it out, and it's just in-town travel, so it's not like it has, needs to be out on the highway, or carries heavy loads or anything like that.
The only reason I ask that is I, certainly whatever assumption we use, really dictates, I think, whether or not a hybrid eventually is going to pay for itself or not.
Sure, yeah.
Is the interest here in looking at a hybrid, what is the interest?
Yeah, I can probably address that. What we wanted to do is we asked for hybrid alternatives on some of the vehicles. The reason is, is because we really hadn't looked at those, and what we wanted to do is take the opportunity to possibly cost out. We didn't know what we would get as far as bids, but we thought if we had the opportunity to cost out, to do some lifecycle costing, we knew maintenance would be an issue, too, because there are really some aspects of the vehicle that are totally different from a regular vehicle, and so we're going to have to make some assumptions. So, we were hoping maybe if we got at least one hybrid bid, this car would be a good one, because it's just a typical car with typical use, that we could try to cost that out. There's a lot of different philosophies on both sides of that, but we just felt it'd be good to look at it if we could.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have one, and it won't pay. Any other questions of staff?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Out of curiosity, there's a couple snowplows in here. How many snowplows do we have in the fleet?
We've got 12, and I think maybe two in reserve. I think we have, I think we have 15, I believe.
So how often, how long do we usually get out of one of those?
15 years plus. The ones that we have are very old, they're in that same category, where they're at least 15 years old and in need of replacement.
Okay. I have a question for Chief Hill on these police vehicles. The Ford Crown Victorias have kind of been our preferred vehicle lately, and it seems like clockwork, about every two years, we get a letter from Chevy dealer complaining that they're never considered, and complaining that the specs are written to favor the Fords, and I wanted to ask if you'd address that.
The specs this year, Commissioner, would have been open to any police package vehicle. Chevy never gave us a bid.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'm on the golf cart issue. I take it they're electric?
Yes, they're electric.
And do they come with, when you get these refurbished or reconditioned, do they come with new batteries?
Yeah, tires, batteries, body works refurbished if it's been damaged or painted. You know, the ones we are trading in, we've gone through one cycle of that. We've replaced the batteries ourselves, we've done the tires ourselves. You know, they're gone, and this new set is going to be relatively new carts that have been reworked with batteries, tires, and so on.
Okay. And we never have discussed any further about having a golf course marshal. Are they called marshals or sheriffs?
Marshals.
Marshals, okay. Can you tell them a golfer? Because after that whole thing with the golf course, and the fees, and the carts, and all of that, I did have a lot of people tell me that they think that we would probably extend the life of some of our carts, and could probably take better care of our greens if they had someone policing out there, especially when there's a lot of tournaments, on the weekends, a lot of people. So I just wondered if, what's the wear and tear on some of these carts? Are they, the ones that we're trading in, are they in pretty bad shape? Do they just have a lot of miles on them? And you were able to trade them in for the refurbished ones? It was a trade-in?
We're actually trading in 24 carts, and they, Rod was correct, and some of them are 99s, but we also got about six 97s, and a 94, and an 87, so they're all ages. We have gone through them. We do, yes, occasionally have damage on a rental cart where somebody ran it into another corridor to a tree. We generally, if we can find out who did that, and which we most often, or most cases we do, we take that and get charges or charge back and are repaid for that. A marshal, in certain cases, would help. Marshals are generally used for speed of play, to make sure that once each group is moving along at a particular rate. With 18 holes and 100 and some acres, it's going to be hard to be at any, at one spot to catch somebody that may be misbehaving or abusing a cart. But I'm sure that it could happen if they could see certain areas, but mostly it's used for speed of play, and maybe the fact that there's somebody out there. And we do send our staff out, when available, to monitor that speed of play, so it's not a matter of their, people are out there. We'll have our maintenance guys that go out on a routine, and they're trained to watch for those kind of things, because they have to fix the stuff that's damaged anyways.
Okay.
Is the idea of that a paid position?
I didn't catch that question.
Is the idea of that a paid position?
Generally, there's two ways to go about it. Some courses have marshals where if they marshal a certain amount of time, they get so many free rounds of golf, and others just have them on the payroll and pay, so there's a couple different options.
Or volunteer.
Or volunteer. Most of them, in our case, from what we hear, that's either the free rounds or some payment of working for that.
Some perk.
Yeah.
Any other questions of staff? Any public comment? I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I would move we approve the 2009 vehicles and equipment plan purchases as recommended.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Phase 1 vehicle and equipment purchases for 2009. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 4-0.
Item 8.3, first reading ordinance Number 0910480, amending Chapter 8 of the Salina Code by adding Section 8-15.01, amending Section 1507.1 of the 2003 International Building Code pertaining to roof slopes.
Mr. Roberts.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. By way of background, the building code that Salina had previously adopted contained a general provision that all types of roofs, when they were constructed, were required to be of a minimum positive slope of 2% to provide runoff of the roof in the roof design. And then, along with that, there was an exception that was provided in that code to allow the building designer to choose, or design a slope of less than 2%, provided they met certain design requirements. When we adopted the latest version of the building code here in Salina, it approached roofs from a different perspective, and actually provided requirements for the design of roofs of differing types of materials, and addressed it material by material, and the prescriptive requirements then for the underlayment and the roof slope to be incorporated within that design for that specific material. But through that reformatting, there was an omission of the previous exception that allowed the designer to choose a lesser slope for the roof if they met any alternative design requirements. We brought this matter to the Building Advisory Board at their November meeting, and they discussed it and agreed that some kind of an exception was, or should be reasonable, and the board directed staff to draft language, generally with some general recommendations to draft language, which we did, and brought back to them at their December meeting, and approved, and that language is included in your blue sheet today for the recommendation of the amendment that we're proposing. And we have also attached a copy of the staff report that we prepared for the board's review to give you a little bit further background information into the item being discussed today. There'd be no fiscal impact to the city in making this change, in conformance with the strategic plan. It believes in keeping with goal number three, that the city will provide the highest quality of services, consistent with the governing body direction, available resources, and staff commitment to quality. We believe there's at least four options that the city commission could take today, taking no action at all at this time, and leaving the current IBC requirements in place. Adopt ordinance Number 0910480 after making any specific changes that would be determined by the commission today. Option number three would be to adopt the ordinance 0910480 as recommended by staff and by the Building Advisory Board, or number four, just to refer the matter back to the Building Advisory Board for any further considerations. Staff would recommend that the commission approve ordinance 0910480, providing this amendment to Section 1507.1 of the 2003 IBC, to provide a new exception to allow design professionals to design roofs with less than 2% slope at their discretion. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have this time.
Questions of staff.
I was just curious, can you think of an example of a roof with less than 2%? I mean, I can think of some residential porch roofs or something, but what?
I think the discussion that we had at the Building Advisory Board, it's pretty easy to design new buildings, standalone buildings, with roofs that meet those requisite slopes. They felt like in some applications, if you're providing in addition to an existing building or doing some infill, that there might be circumstances where it was more difficult to provide that minimum amount of slope, and the thing that the board certainly wanted to take into consideration, as I mentioned, is that the building code now looks at different types of roofs, bitumenous coverings, rubber roofs, and metal roofs, things like that, not metal roofs. Well, yeah, metal roofs, and, but there are some of these roofs that the manufacturers won't warranty their product unless it's installed on a base that has a minimum positive slope. There are some products that they will go ahead and warranty, and so the board wanted to make sure that the designer was taking into consideration in his design, if he had to go less than that, he was considering some kind of a product the manufacturer would still stand behind if they were, if it was applied on a roof slope of less than those parameters.
Other questions of staff?
I would assume that most of the buildings that are downtown today were built before this 2% grade requirement was in effect?
I would have to agree that most of the downtown buildings were built before these requirements were in place, but I, it's also been my anecdotal observation that most of the roofs downtown do have, either because the roofs have been changed over time, and they've had a cambered insulation product installed on the roof to provide the slope or whatever, that most of the roofs downtown do have slope that would meet these minimum slope requirements now. There still probably are some flat roofs remaining, but I'm not aware of any at this point.
Other questions? Thank you. Any public comment? If not, I'll bring it back to the commission.
A comment, I usually always defer to the building codes advisory board because they have more expertise than that that I don't. However, in my other job, I have lots of experience dealing with roof leaks on flat roofs, and I can't imagine why we'd want to do away with that requirement, so I'm not going to support it. going to support it.
Well, I would go ahead and move that we adopt ordinance number 09-10480, which amends Section 1507.1 of the 2003 IBC.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 0910480. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes 3 to 1. Commissioner Jelka voting against.
Mayor Vanir, I move to recess into executive session for 20 minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege, for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters, and reconvene in this room at 4:51 PM.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn into executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 4-0. We're in executive session.
Mayor, real quick, if I could, I wanted to slip in before that, but I'd like to introduce our new human relations director before you take off into there, just real quickly, if I could. Be all right? Gina, would you please come up? Gina McDonald's has been with us just a few short weeks, and you all recognize Kate Crawford from before. Now we have Gina, and we're excited to have her on board. She gives us a lot of experience and strong administrative and management skills, so just wanted to introduce her and let you know we have a couple other new ones that we will bring to you and introduce fairly soon.
Very good. Welcome.
Thank you.
Do you expect any action?
We do not.
Okay. Thank you. We're in executive session.
Well, we're going to be...